It does. Hey Scott!
Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 PM. It is June the 20th. This is the Rockford Area Schools Board of Education regular meeting, and we are calling this meeting to order. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, up next is board roll call. Brady Anderson.
Here.
Eric Gordy.
Here.
Jessica Johnson.
Here.
Beth Frasca.
Here.
Jenny Neeland is absent planned. And Amy Edwards is here. We have five of six board members present. Thus, we have four of them, and we can take action this evening. With that, I would ask for a motion regarding tonight's agenda.
Eric Gordy, motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I have a first by Mr. Gordy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comments related to tonight's agenda? All right, pending no further discussion or comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Agenda carries unanimously. Next, moving on to public comments. I'll read a brief statement, look to the clerk at this point in time. We do not have public comments this evening. I will quick read this statement. "As per routine, public comment at each regular school board meeting is an opportunity for residents of the Rockford Area School District to address the school board. After being recognized by the chair, each individual will identify themselves and the group they represent, if any. To ensure that all individuals have a chance to speak, speakers will be limited to one three-minute presentation. The public comment portion of the regular school board meeting is not a time to debate and issue, but for the board to hear comments from community members. It is important to remember that the board has a legal responsibility to protect their rights and privacy and due process for all employees and students. This means that both district policy and the Minnesota law prohibit public disclosure of matters that involve private data about students or employees, even without naming the student or employee in open session. This prohibition includes a public comment portion of a school board meeting. The board respects and values inputs on matters of concern, but when they involve complaints about a particular student or employee, such input must be heard and addressed by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board." That I'll look one more time, just to validate that we do not have any public comment this evening. We do not have public comment. And public comment is now closed. Moving on to item number four, which is our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion related to the consent agenda this evening.
Eric Gordy, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a first by Mr. Gordy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? All right, with that, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And abstained?
I abstain.
Ms. Johnson. All right, very good. And so it carries. Agenda carries, or consent agenda items do carry. Next, moving on to item number five, which is our facilities update call upon Mr. Hoffman from ICS. Welcome.
Hello. Thanks for having me again. As usual, it seems, at this point. Just a quick update. Obviously, we had the special board meeting beginning of June to award the bids for the parking lot project. So those are underway. Just a little bit of update on that. We're looking at mobilizing around July 11. So you'll start to see some things like fences and protection and site protection, things like that go up. But the real heavy work, you can imagine, will start at that point. So with that project, when we awarded it in the beginning of June, there was, if you recall, there was what we called four alternates with that project that we didn't award at that time. And we were going to do some investigation on pricing and what that looked like. So the long and the short of that is, we do those alternates to give us some options as we're looking at how bids come in. So if they were a really good bid day, maybe we could get some things we didn't plan on, or use that to strategize on how to get things done. So very quickly, we're not recommending, we'll move ahead with any of those alternates at this point. It's not a board-required action. It's just something we wanted you to know, that we're not going to move forward with the recommendation to go ahead and award those. We are still actively pursuing some different pricing on some different types of scopes of work within the project. Different chip-seal projects and pavement repairs and things like that. They didn't match the alternates exactly, so we can't award them. When we award the alternate, it has to be that exact product. So we're still looking at utilizing some additional funds that we have within the project and some other funds with LTFM to get some more things done. So we'll analyze that and move forward with those as we can. That kind of leads me into this process. And you guys haven't been through it before, so just wanted to be, you know, kind of, again, go through this, how this really works. Back in May, the board approved the authorization given to the superintendent and given to the facilities committee for a couple of different levels of approvals to a change of a contract. Right? So we just wanted to make sure that we're understood. When a change order happens to a contract, it comes to the board for final approval, which it always does and will. There are things within that change order that that authority that we gave may apply. So I know it's kind of cumbersome to talk to about. So I brought an example change order from a different project. Let you feel, hopefully that's okay. Nobody has any problems with the chill. But this is considered a change order. So this is the document that would come to the board for final approval. Within the change order, there are four changed events. These are the things that we have gave the superintendent and facility committee the approval to change. These things, these four events on this particular change order, do not have to relate to each other at all. So as a context, the parking lot project, maybe we wanted to chip-seal the parking lot out front here, and that's a $25,000 item. And then maybe we wanted to add some playground equipment to the playground number, and that's a $25,000 item. So the facility committee has the authority, which the board gave, to approve those two different items. They would go together on a single change order for $50,000. So that's just what we wanted to make sure was ultra-clear, that if you see a change order come, and let's say we had five of those projects, now we're saying, oh, wait a minute, it exceeds the limit of the authority we gave. Well, each individual item is what's in the change order of the authority. Now, just to be even more clear, we will not come with, well, let's do chip-sealing over here, and chip-sealing over there, and chip-sealing over there, and all similar style projects, but break them up into smaller components, and then do a change order to get them all through. That's not the purpose, nor intent, nor we would do something like that. It's just different things. As you can see, and I'll pass this around, you can take a view. There's a lot of backup, there's a lot of paperwork that goes into the justification of pricing, when things are going to happen, all the different approvals within the contract before it's to the board. So we want to utilize the efficiency of just doing that once as opposed to multiple times throughout the project. So that's the purpose of that. So just wanted to be ultra-clear with that process. And I think that was understood, but again, just trying to make sure that, since it is your first time kind of going through this, we want to make sure everybody's in the know. But besides that, we are continuing with looking at LTFM work, so the long-term facilities maintenance work that's happening. Remember, that is another part of all of these projects happening. So we do have a kind of little subgroup that's meeting weekly to talk about deferred maintenance items, when they're going to be scheduled, who's going to get pricing on them, who's going to manage them, all those good things. Right out of the gate, we know that roofing and the RCC floor are very important ones. So we have some consultants coming in this week to take a look at those two items and help us out with pricing and schedules and, you know, best times of procurement and things like that. So we'll have a little bit more information as the time goes on. But definitely, even the facility can be obviously up to date on all that information. That was kind of, that's it for my update at this point, unless you have any questions about anything that's moving forward.
Ms. Johnson?
I just have a question. You said everything starting July 11. Where does that put us then with the sort of the school year? Is that going to push things? I mean, just like, never?
Yep. Middle school lot is expected, I mean, right now, the plan is the middle school lot is going to be open for first day of school. So as kids and sports maybe start the last of August, it's going to be tight over there. But the goal right now, and the expectation is that that will be open the day of school starts. The elementary and high school lot is probably further into September at this point to complete. And we understand that there might be some work on some of the surrounding parking lots. That will all be completed before school starts. The actual turnaround is probably late September. So we'll work with administration, and obviously, both district level and the school level, to make sure that we're keeping the appropriate safeguards and people away from that area. We will have a staggered completion of certain items, like the playground will be moved and done beforehand. So, but we'll want to be cognizant of that playground is right up against that new bus loop, right? So even if it is in and done, how does that look? We want to make sure that the administration is good with it, that whoever supervises the areas are good with it, and how work is transpiring during that process and time. So we'll look at that with those individuals. But that one's going to be a little bit later as a completion date. Hopefully, that doesn't affect too much as the school, you know, obviously, is now running with a system in place for pickup and drop-off. So probably keep that going or modify if needed.
And just maybe another clarifying question to Dubtel and Jessica's. What was the, what is the reason that, like, that particular section might not be done until September?
That's a good question. I am in the industry, and it, I hate the, it's not just affecting construction, but just the blanket statement, you know, logistic issues or supply chain issues and things like that. But it's real in cases of things like what's underneath the parking lot or concrete structures that are pre-made, pre-manufactured, pre-cast things. There's, to get really into the details, underneath that parking lot, there's also big storage containers, basically underground ponds. Those are the things that are just long wait items. And they're just that long to get. And we did our best to get that going right away and get ordered, but it's just that far out. Some of those things traditionally would be a three-day wait item. Just order it, it shows up. Now, we're waiting 20 weeks for some concrete products that we never had to wait for before. And I just wish I could explain it more than that and provide more reason why, but that's just what we're dealing with all the way around. That's why we're looking at roofing and things and RCC floor and all sorts of other deferred maintenance items now, because they're next summer projects. We're trying to get ahead of that ordering so that we have them. And it's not even be well in advance. They're just going to come in when we need them. So that's the nature of our world right now.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Superintendent Dean, anything you want to add to this conversation? All right. Great, and everyone understands generally the change order process. Thank you. That was one of the things the facility committee wanted to bring back here, just for, like, because it's different. I mean, not different, but it's new work.
Yeah.
We didn't want any accidental surprises.
Right.
All right, great. Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Yep. All right. Next, moving on to item number 6A, which is the resolution to acknowledge contributions and donations. In your packet, you'll find a presentation. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Dean.
Thank you, Chair Edwards. Well, the acknowledgement of contributions, I say this every month, but it's true, that our community is generous and that I'm always amazed at the different type of individuals, organizations, or agencies that actually contribute to Rockford Area Schools, whether it's an individual, or a couple, or, like I said, the Lions Club, or any nonprofit. It's just every month, I'm just like, wow, look at that. I would like to just add that when we get the contribution, there is a letter that goes to the individual or the agency acknowledging the contribution, thanking them for the contribution, and then, of course, providing them with some sort of documentation that they did provide a donation to Rockford Area Schools. So I just wanted to add that this month, that they do receive some acknowledgement from the school district for their generosity.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as stated in the agenda, accepting the acknowledgement of contributions.
All right, I have a first from Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Frasca. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? All right, pending no further discussion or comment. This is a resolution, so it's a roll call vote. Eric Gordy?
Aye.
Brady Anderson?
Aye.
Beth Frasca?
Aye.
Jessica Johnson?
Aye.
Amy Edwards?
Aye.
And Jenny Neeland is absent. Resolution carries unanimously. And echo what Superintendent Dean says. What a huge generosity and what was kind of cool to see is individual contributors, but then also some really big community movement contributors, like the Boosters, the Ed Foundation, and the Lions. So just cool to have that sort of support in our community. Our kids rely on it, for sure. Thank you. All right. Next, moving on to item number 6B, which is a revised budget for fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23 original budget. Mr. Fritian, our interim business manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. Last month's meeting, we did a presentation on what the numbers for the budget were looking at. It's not my intention to repeat that this evening, unless you'd like me to go through it again. Numbers have not, it was changed significantly, so presented before you are numbers we are recommending for both sets of budgets. Just a comment on the FY '22 budget, which is the year we're just completing. We have our first state-wide turnaround run of where we're at with our average daily membership, actual numbers. As noted in the board packet, 1,549 students we projected. We had 1,551. We exceeded target by 2.5, which is better than being short by 2.5. So with that, I'm feeling fairly confident we're going to land general fund. We made the revenue target on the biggest one, the general fund formula, obviously. And what's so hard about that is, we don't know until the year's over how many kids are tuitioned out, where they went for education somewhere else that we're responsible for. And that number came in on target where it should have been. So Madam Chair, board members, I do recommend approval of both of these budgets this evening. Again, by state law, we have to approve next year's budget before July 1, or you will go into shutdown. I don't think I need to explain that to anybody in Minnesota anymore. I used to have to.
All right, thank you. Any comments related to the budget as presented in front of us? Great. Well, with that, this is an action item this evening, and I would entertain a motion.
Eric Gordy, motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 revised budget and the fiscal year 2023 original budget as presented.
All right, I have a first from Mr. Gordy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Pending no further discussion or comment, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. And I think just really helpful to have had the prep last month to talk it through. So made tonight's action easy and straightforward. So thank you. Nice to see that fun balance, too. All right, next, moving on to item number 7A, which is the Minnesota State High School League renewal of membership for years 2022 to 2023. Superintendent Dean, are you presenting this one?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is an annual resolution for membership to the Minnesota State High School League. It's brought in front of the board every year. It's part of the process of joining the league and adhering by all of their bylaws and all of the other requirements to participate in Minnesota State High School League.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions or comments? This is an action item this evening, and it is a resolution. If there's no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the renewal membership for NSHSL for 2022-2023.
Great. I have a first by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Frasca. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? All right, pending no further discussion or comment, I'll call for a vote. Again, this is a resolution, so we will do full roll call. Jessica Johnson?
Aye.
Eric Gordy?
Aye.
Beth Frasca?
Aye.
Brady Anderson?
Aye.
Amy Edwards?
Aye.
Jenny Neeland absent. Resolution carries unanimously as presented. Thank you. Next, moving on to item number 7C, which is policy 614. And it's our second and final reading. I'll turn it over to Superintendent. Oh, did I skip?
7B.
Oh, I got two, two, myself. Item number 7B. I started crossing my list off. Sorry about that. Thank you. Item number 7B, which is resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Dean.
Thank you, Chair Edwards. So this resolution is a new resolution for, at least me, during my tenure as being superintendent. But this resolution is to establish the dates for filing and affidavit, an affidavit for candidacy for school board. And so this fall, we will have school board elections. And Yvonne has been learning a lot about just elections in general, for general election as well as school board elections, and learning the, all the bylaws and resolutions and all the requirements for both Wright County and Hanifin County. So this is a new endeavor for us, but looking forward, well, some of us are looking forward to it. But looking forward to it. But this, again, this resolution is, it's not an annual resolution, but it is a resolution that the board has seen in the past.
Absolutely. And the filing dates that are listed in here, the filing begins on August the 2nd, 2022, and it closes at 5:00 PM on August the 16th, 2022.
Correct.
Great. Any questions? Oh, go ahead, please.
No, I was just going to say, so this is board action that we'd like the board to vote on this resolution, so we can move forward.
Yep, that sounds good. Yep, this is a generally procedural, sort of, an action item. Any questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavit candidacy.
Great, thanks, Jessica. I have a first by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Eric Gordy, second.
Second by Mr. Gordy. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Pending no further discussion or comment, this is a resolution, so I will call for a roll call vote. Beth Frasca?
Aye.
Brady Anderson?
Aye.
Eric Gordy?
Aye.
Jessica Johnson?
Aye.
Amy Edwards?
Aye.
Jenny Neeland absent. Resolution carries unanimously as presented. All right, good. Thank you. Next, moving on to policy number 614, which is our second and final reading. And this is action this evening. It was presented to us before, so I'll just look across the room here and see if there's any comments. Superintendent Dean, any comments, additional things to note?
No additional comments.
All right. Pending no additional comments, this is action this evening. And again, this is second and final read.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 614.
All right, I have a first by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Frasca. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Pending no further discussion or comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, carries unanimously. Next, moving on to item number 8A, which is an announcement about our upcoming dates for the board. We will be having a work session on Wednesday, the 22nd, in the community center, beginning at 6:30 PM. This is a closed session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. Next is our work session on Monday, July 18, in the Rockford Community Center at 5:30 PM. And then that'll be immediately followed by, or shortly followed by, our regular meeting of the board on same date, Monday, July 18, at 6:30 PM here. Looking to my clerk, and clerk, and, yep, okay. Just to validate that those are the accurate and true dates. Wonderful, noted. And then moving on to our last agenda item, which is item number 8B, which is boarding committee updates. For anyone that's in the audience, if you wish to stay for our boarding committee updates, you are certainly welcome to do so, but we have concluded the action items this evening that would require any potential support from our administrative teams. So we'll go around the horn. Mr. Anderson, any updates for the board?
Yeah, I attended the last Masico meeting. I think it was the last meeting. It's been a while since I was there. So, yeah, so the May meeting. It was their annual budget update. Overall, the budget is healthy. They expressed some concern over some hiring challenges, not unique to any organization. But that was kind of the highlight there, is hiring challenges, budget's in good shape. So it seems like our trusted partner, Masico, is managing their finances well. And, yeah, I have a whole lot more to share from that. And that is my only committee meeting that I had in the last while, so.
Great. Thank you, Brady. Or any questions for Brady I should ask?
Jessica, I'll send you my notes. My computer is not good right now.
I get the minutes meeting.
Okay, okay.
You're all good. No problem.
Thanks for covering.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So I don't have any committee meetings. Jessica was to attend a meeting, and then that was canceled. So there you go. I did go to graduation. It was wonderful. First foot inside for me, so it was beautiful and lovely. And I was happy to be there. And then pre-meeting to get ready for tonight.
Great. Thanks, Beth. Eric?
All right. Couple of facilities meetings, a little bit of north plus suburban work. Worked on the executive director's evaluation goals. Worked with the HR director from Elk River 728, I think, to create a performance matrix for measuring goals, rather than just saying yes. So we, he created a, we talked it through. We created a matrix over that conversation to figure out how to measure percent of how much to give for the goals. So, and other than that, she got a favorable review, met her goals. She has some nice professional learning opportunities for her staff there. And one thing of note is, they have a rather large library of materials. We didn't check any out this year. So if we can explore those opportunities, that would be a good thing, eventually, if people are aware. So probably just awareness is a good thing.
I don't know if she is aware of that.
Just awareness is a good thing. That's it.
Great. Thanks, Eric. Jessica?
All right, so, I'll keep my thoughts going. Masico negotiations meeting, of course, graduation. I did attend the senior awards as well. The C general membership meeting, I did attend that via Zoom. I wasn't able to attend the one in Coquato, because I canceled it. Otherwise, I would have been there for more of our area. Deb is stepping down, so everybody knows Deb.
Hinden?
Yes, she's.
There's somebody else already.
Yeah, so she's, I'm sad. She's been like our person that we, you know, visit the most. I did attend the staff graduation at Masico. We had a Rockford graduate there, so that was fun to be there and see the family. And so it was, I, that graduation is such a great graduation of those kids. I just, it's so fun. They put together a really neat slideshow to show their, their whole year. And they, those teachers that run that program are incredible. Beth can attest to that.
I'm glad they're still there.
They're still there. They do an amazing job. End of year breakfast here. I also did the last day at Masico. I gave the welcome address to the staff there. And negotiations here. Yeah, I forgot that. I think that's it.
Had a busy May.
Yeah, forgot about negotiations. That's okay.
Nice. Any questions for Jessica? Thank you. Thanks for all of the representation of the district that everyone has done the last few weeks. Just from my vantage point, you know, obviously, engaged in the facilities committee with Mr. Gordy, and so we've had a few of those. And we'll be meeting approximately every two weeks, as long as there's a reason to convene, we'll be convening. If there's not a reason to convene, we won't. But just with helping to manage that project in support of the district in that effort. Pre-meeting for this, of course, attended graduation, senior awards, National Honor Society induction. I don't know, the list goes on. The district gets real busy the last couple of weeks of school, and it certainly is exciting. is exciting. Had an opportunity to also attend the end of the year staff breakfast and then awards. And just kudos to our selection committee for the great job that you all did on, you know, select, not only selecting and going through all the nominations for the, the staff awards, but also the really gracious and kind words that were shared. And then just the other feedback, too, is I do love that tradition of the staff honoring the retirees. Just really cool, really cool to see that. And the room, I just, again, it's, it was a, it has been a big couple of years here. And certainly, you know, from our staff perspective, we hear that this was a really challenging year to feel, to be in the same room with everyone and honoring and having so much celebration was pretty cool. So nice to be a part of that, so thanks for that. Thanks for including the board and having us play a role in that. So thank you. And those are kind of my general updates for, for this evening. Any questions? Otherwise, I'll turn over to Superintendent Dean.
Well, since you ended with the, with the staff end of year breakfast, I'll start with the end of year breakfast. I have to give kudos to my administrative assistant, Yvonne, because she really does put on that program. She makes sure all the awards are perfect, all the certificates are formatted perfect, that every, every I is dotted and every T is crossed, and making sure that the retirees are truly honored. I was sharing with Yvonne that, you know, we've kind of morphed that program over the last few years, because I remember my first year, we had it in the, in the lunchroom. But just moving in and having it more formal and really honoring the retirees and those people for their years of service, I mean, all of it. And then the STAR awards, the S.R. awards, just a way to, to really acknowledge the, the good work that our staff does. So I'll, I'll start with that. But going back to the top, sorry, Gordy. Attended the, of course, Reams had an arts and academic showcase at the end of the year. It was full board. Everyone came out, it felt like that night. Attended the STRIVE graduation, which is here in this room. That was an amazing graduation. And if you remember, STRIVE is the program that we have business volunteers that work with our seniors to provide that after graduation mentoring and support and guidance, but it was a great graduation. Participated in the final Northwest Suburban IB visit, so that, we checked that box and we are officially an IB authorized school. Of course, attended NHS award ceremony, senior award ceremony. Attended quite a few safe routes to school meetings between the county and discussing what they're going to do out here on County Road 50, Rebecca Trail, as well as our Safe Routes to School Committee, just kind of firming up some of the things that we want to do as it relates to safe routes, actually riding bikes to school or walking to school, what that will look like. May is a busy month, actually the whole month of May. I don't know why this is on my list, but May 26th, to be specific, when we had a track meet going on out here, which I think had eight different schools, maybe 10. We had a track meet, we had softball sections, we had baseball sections. I mean, that evening was just packed and I just, it was, it was actually a warm, warm feeling to see everyone out and, and the kids having fun and laughing and just having a good time. Of course, attended graduation, and I know it was your first one inside. Appreciate that. I think the, what I'd like to share is, or an acknowledgement, that we've had three totally different graduations in three years. So for three years, it was never, oh, we'll just pull out the file and do what we did last year, changing a few dates. No, they've been totally different for three years. And this year, again, was a, was a great event. Attended the chamber coffee and conversation. It was actually outside, underneath the pavilion in Lions Park. It was just real informal, but nonetheless. Attended, of course, several facilities meetings over the course of the past month. And again, really just refining the, the to-do list now, making sure that everything is on track and getting those updates done this summer. Attended a best prep. I don't know if everyone knows, but I am on the board of best prep and attended a board retreat last week. Also participated in Northwest Suburban Joint Powers Board as the superintendent representative. And then today, I attended the Masico Law Conference, which was really good. Great information there. Continuing to work a little bit with negotiations, in the process of working with the principals. And then next week, we'll have our first meet and greet with 284. So hopefully that'll, that'll start moving quickly. And then just two final things. Number one, I don't know if the board is aware, but I've started the practice of having a little meet and greet with every licensed staff person that we hire. So not all of our non-certified, so not all the, you know, fitness instructors or coaches, but if they're a licensed teacher, counselor, social worker, not social workers, speech pathologist, I do a little meet and greet with every single one of them prior to them, prior to us offering them a contract. So just kind of part of our way to recruit and hopefully retain good talent. And then finally, the Rocket Report. It's just kind of an FYI that it's on delay. Supply chain issues. We think the printer can't get the paper or staples or something. So it's going to be delayed a few weeks, but it is ready to go and so. And that's my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Dean? No questions? All right. So we have concluded our agenda this evening with the exception of the final one, which is item number nine, which is motion to adjourn. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Johnson, first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Anderson. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Tending no further discussion or comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. Here adjourned, 7:07 PM. Thank you all.
The best of the minutes. And the minutes are great.
I'm not, you know, I'm just going to go over them right now, send it back to, and I'm done. Is that one point?
Well, I have to have the certificate.
Oh, I asked Brenda if you guys wanted to.
That's a nice.
Do you want to add some more to that?